Good evening and welcome to the Village of Westmont. Committee of the whole meeting for June 17, 2010. I'd like to ask our clerk to take the roll call, please.
Mayor Ron.
Here.
The clerks here. Trustee Emory.
Here.
Trustee Fleming.
Here.
Trustee Forsley.
Here.
Trustee Klebenow is absent. Trustee Scott.
Here.
Trustee Seneca.
Here.
Manager Cyril.
Here.
Ernie Zemanek.
Here.
Police Chief Mulhern.
Here.
Fire Chief Trout.
Public Works Director May.
Here.
Deputy Police Chief Gunther.
Here.
Billy Chplaner Malik.
Thank you. Please join us in the fudge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item minutes of the committee, the whole meeting held June 3 and board meeting held June 7, 2010. Any corrections? Hearing, no corrections, moving right along, open forum. We have one request and ask from our police chief, Tom Mulhern. Chief, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to remind everybody, one week from right now, next Thursday, June 24, will be squad car night for Cruisin' Nights. As of today, as of 5 o'clock today, we have 36 squad cars from different communities coming, 57 police officers, and we have one that reserved that will be coming from a neighboring community and I will, hopefully he will show up. It's supposedly one of the squad cars from the original Batman movie from Gotham City coming, and so we're looking forward to that. And we just found out one officer attending had, I guess, the day after in Joliet, there's something to do with race cars. And so there's two officers, one's coming from West Virginia and one's coming from Ohio, heard about our event and asked if they could attend. So now we're reaching out to other states, not just only other communities and counties. So if everyone please, if you have some time next Thursday, we start at 6 o'clock. We are changing location to Burlington and Cass. All the squad cars will be at Burlington and Cass. McGruff will be there, I believe, for a short period of time for the kids. And we'd just like to see if everybody can come out and stop and say hello. We'll be out there. And that was all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving right along, our reports. I would, at this time, like to call our fire chief Frank Trout up to the podium for a special presentation. This presentation was initially scheduled to occur on Monday, but since the chief showed up tonight with all of his uniform on except his hat, I thought we would go ahead and make this presentation this evening. Now, this is for certification that our fire chief Frank Trout has been for how many years?
Since 2004.
2004. And he has maintained that credentialing now every couple of years?
Every three years. We're, we go through a peer review. We have to show our, what we've been doing with education and community involvement and other things.
Okay, very good. Well, this gives him his recertification for that position. Let me read this as follows. "Commission on Professional Credentialing has conferred upon Frank C. Trout re-designated March 9, 2010. Designation of Chief Fire Officer CFO for demonstrating a high level of competence, as witnessed by your peers, by documenting professional educational, technical, and community service achievements, and fulfilling prescribed standards of performance, ethics, and conduct required for CFO." And this is signed by the Board of Directors of the Commission on Professional Credentialing. So I would like to present this to you and thank you again, as we do quite often, for all the wonderful service that you and your department provide for the village and I'm sure will continue to do for a long time to come.
Thank you, sir.
Congratulations. Just another reason to demonstrate, as we continually do, that we here in the Village of Westmont feel that we have the best police department and fire department in the county of DuPage, and Frank's an excellent example of that for all the work that he does, not only as fire chief, but also in community service in many different areas. Thank you. That's all that I have right now. And moving right along, our village clerk.
The only thing I want to add is, if you're watching us tonight, get down to Cruisin' Nights. It's a beautiful night. Don't be sitting in your house watching TV. Get out in the town. That's all I have.
Thank you. Our village attorney, John Zemanek.
I'll not report tonight. Thank you.
Village manager, Ron Cyril.
Thank you, Mayor. Like to request an executive session for personnel following the regular meeting. And I wanted to just point out a couple of changes on the purchase orders on the second page. We have them segregated, as we've been previously asked by the board to do, for the vehicles. I just found out this evening, however, that the first purchase order under the main section, the one for Burris Equipment, that is technically part of the vehicle replacement program, so for Monday, we'll move that down in the separate vote section. And the other thing I wanted to point out is the purchase order for John Neary Construction, we had noted that that's simultaneously on the finance, that actually will be a manual check. So we'll make that notation for Monday's agenda as well. And that is all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Village trustees, starting with trustee Seneca.
Thank you. Just wanted to remind everyone about the Chamber of Commerce golf outing on the 23rd of June. I believe there's still space available for foursomes. It's going to be great, so think about that. And also, welcome home to Lorraine Deverick. She's doing quite well, and she's out of the hospital recuperating. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Fleming.
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Trustee Emory.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Trustee Scott.
Nothing, sir.
Trustee Forsley.
I'm just going to add on to trustee Seneca was saying, we, if you like golf, there's a lot of golf outings and, and we've got, of course, got the Chamber one coming up. And then, those of you that know, we're very involved, my family's very involved with C-Spar. And C-Spar has a golf outing on July 23. So anybody who'd like to get involved, they're looking for people to participate in that, and that has a dinner also. And then, coming in August 5, Maze Lake, here in town, has their golf outing. So anybody that likes golf and enjoys being out on those golf, you know, golf outings, which are, which are a lot of fun, we have enough of them. We got the Chamber coming up, as I said. C-Spar is July 23, and Maze Lake is August 5. And I'm sure you just contacted each of those organizations to get involved. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sure you saw the article in this week's progress regarding Keith Becker and the renaming of the street.
I did, and I want to thank the village for, again, for doing that.
It was not only a nice article, but it was a nice picture of him, as we all remembered him when he was the principal for the Westmont Junior High School. So thank you for all your efforts along the lines for Keith Becker.
Thank you.
Moving right along, unfinished business. 209 East Ogden Avenue, Lamborghini Lotus. Board to consider an amendment to the special use permit issued in 2005 to permit the parking of up to 10 vehicles in the front yard setback.
Hello, my name's Chris Greco. I represent Lamborghini Chicago. About six months ago, we were notified by a letter that we were only allowed up to four cars on the front line, which pretty much is right on Ogden Avenue in front of our dealership. So it's a prominent display to show our cars and inventory. However, the space is much larger than, than that can fit up to four cars. So we are simply requesting to put up to 10 cars up on the front line. It won't impede any traffic. Everything's built. It's a brick paver front. No construction needs to be done. It won't block any pedestrians. The entry to it is on our driveway, so it's pretty much just requesting that we, somewhat like every other dealership, are allowed to display our inventory off of Ogden Avenue.
Do you, by any chance, have any renderings that might show how it looks now and how it might look with the increased number of cars parked in front of the dealership?
Yeah, Shannon will be able to show you something.
So the location that they're talking about is on the north part of the property, just south of Ogden Avenue. And they're not proposing to change the actual limits of that. They're just wanting to park additional vehicles on it, up to 10 at a time. That would be, as we understand it, if it were only Lotus. If it were a mixture of different brands, it would be slightly less than the 10.
The reason we request 10 is Lotus is a very small car. So in the likelihood of having a new product launch or the representatives from England coming, we would probably put as many as we can. You know, not where it's, you can't open the door. But most likely, there, you know, at any given time, there will be seven to nine, you know, depending on what type of cars. Some of the cars are very wide and just depends on how we display them.
So it's not only going to be Lotus, or it is going to be Lotus?
It's, we sell all different types of cars. I'm saying the maximum of 10 because Lotus is the smallest car. You know, we wouldn't put cars on the grass, it has to be on the pavers. And to make it pleasing for our customers, you have to be able to get in the cars, you know, somewhat, we display them so you have the ease of walking around and looking at them from afar.
Shannon, did you have anything else you wanted to present?
I don't think so at this time, unless there are any questions on behalf of the board.
Questions from board members?
Will they be used cars up there, too?
There's new and used cars, correct.
I'm actually okay with it, as long as staff is comfortable that, you know, there's enough space and that it's paved, you know, it's a beautiful building, it's, I think it'll be tastefully done.
Right.
I wouldn't want to see, you know, balloons and flags and things like that, because that would really diminish the value of the brand. But I'm fine with it.
Thank you.
We're trying to do all that we can to help our dealerships in any way that we can. Obviously, the more cars you sell, the more sales tax revenue the village gets, so this is another way of helping both of us to generate more revenue.
Yeah, I agree. And, you know, when we were notified, we had eight cars at once. We were notified by a letter and we went right to four, and now Shannon's been helping me go through the process, so we just want to make sure we do it right.
Okay. Any other questions?
No.
Okay. There being no further questions, it'll be on our agenda for a vote on Monday.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in. Next item, West Hills Community Church, 213 East 55th Street. Order, consider a request from West Hills Community Church to host a '70s and '80s outdoor rock music concert on a Saturday night in late July or August 2010.
Good evening, I'm Drew Bakis. I'm pastor of West Hills Community Church. And here with me, Matt Kilgore. And I do actually have more developed plans since the point that we got this on the agenda. If you would like to see those, I can, I have papers for you if you want. But basically, what we're looking at doing is August 21, rather than in the evening, we'd like to do it in the afternoon, from 3:00 to 4:30. That is, again, on a Saturday. Our desire is to have an outdoor concert on our, on our own property. We have a large grassy field of our property. The building is on the northwest corner, and the rest of it is all filled around just under five acres. And so we'd like to have an outdoor concert. It would be a benefit fundraiser for our Hands Projects efforts, which are, it's a community service effort that we do about every three to four months. We started last year performing community service projects, and so the fundraiser side of it would be used to generate money, to pour into then helping the community of Westmont and of neighboring communities as well. Our next Hands Project is planned for September, and it will be with Almost Home Kids, also formerly known as the Coach Care Center, nonprofit organization in Naperville. They deal with helping medically fragile children and their families, providing short-term clinical and respite care, things along that line is, is kind of what our heartbeat is, so.
Well, you see, the first thing that comes to all of our minds is the noise factor and that there are residential homes that surround your property. Have you given any consideration to the handling, the volume and that?
Yes.
Problems that that might cause for the neighbors?
Yes. One thing that we've talked is with our elder counsel at the church is, we are going to write letters and release them just to the, to our neighbors, letting them know so we can contact our neighbors, let them know that we will be having this in advance. We will give them a cellphone number so that if they have any concerns before or during the event, they can call us. Matt is with the band and he's going to work to make, you know, make sure that it's not an overly loud concert either, so.
Okay. Will you have a fenced-in area, or how will you get attendees in and out?
It's going to be-
Because they'll pay for a ticket, right?
It's going to be a ticketless event with free will donation.
Oh, okay.
So, and, and that's kind of our, sort of a side desire as well, just another opportunity for people of the community to come together, our neighbors and stuff, to gather together and have fun while also pooling money together for a good cause.
Will refreshments be served or anything like that?
We're not, we're not planning on any refreshments. That wasn't part of the plan, no.
How about for parking? If it's a ticketless event and you do a fantastic job in promoting this, what if you get an overcrowd there?
What we'd, what we'd like to do, and my office assistant had called and asked some questions on it, it didn't seem like there was a lot of concern, but that's one thing I would like to gather from you if I could. There is, there are no posted parking restrictions on the streets surrounding us. So our thought there, if it does work, is that we could utilize that. We would like to pull together a team from our church to do, you know, a free valet sort of thing, for those that want to take that, take that option, otherwise parking themselves. That was our, our plan.
How much parking do you have on your property?
We have roughly 50 spaces. So I don't recall exactly offhand.
And you're anticipating 250 may attend?
It could be, yes.
You could end up with a lot of cars on the street.
But you would stay off 55th, though.
Yes, yes, yes. We would stay off 55th.
Okay. And chances are, you'll have more than one person in a car anyway.
What about parking in part of the five acres that you've got?
What's that?
What about parking in part of the five acres that you've got?
That's been one thing that we have considered. We've done that in the past with a few events, and that would, that's one thing worth considering.
So if you had an overflow, you would consider putting them on a portion of the grass, grassy area? Okay. Got our police chief here. I'd like to ask him for his suggestions.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. Our recommendation is, I saw this earlier, would be that all the parking be south of 55th Street, nothing north of 55th Street. We've had several very serious accidents at that location. Our concern is the pedestrian traffic going back and forth. You have the crest of a hill less than 500 feet to the east, creating a daring dangerous situation, not only when cars turn left there, but for pedestrians. So we would ask everything be south, maybe even to the point where the village would put no parking signs north of 55th to accomplish that. The other thing we'd recommend, too, is that if you park, which we would park on Wilmette Street or down to 56th Street, anywhere south of there, only parking restricted to one side of the street. If we have parking on both sides of the street, the street's so narrow that you won't be able to get emergency equipment down it. And the street department or police department would put temporary no parking signs on one side to assist with that. I do like the idea of the valet parking, so you could, you know, direct it down to that area. I do have some other questions, since I'm here. The time, I was very, very pleased to see what the time is. Is this going to be just only for your church members only, or open to the public?
It would be open to the public.
Okay, all right. We also ask, too, that if you could provide the police department with that contact number for a person on site, so that if, you know, our shift supervisor starts having a problem, he'd have someone to go there. Sometimes we go to an event and we have a hard time who's actually in charge, and that would help us that way. The other thing is also, too, is any permit that would be issued would also be given with the admonishment that if there's a noise, enough, there's noise complaints or serious noise complaints, that the police department always has the authority to come and, and not so much stop the event, but you get to turn the amplification off. You can still continue with your event, but there'd be no amplified sound. Doesn't happen very often, but we request that to be in there. What type of music, I guess? I think what I saw originally was 70s or 80s.
70s.
Okay, so it's an older crowd, then, you would imagine?
No diehard heavy metal, we promise.
I don't care. I won't be there to listen, but if you had 70s or 80s, I'll probably be there. And the other thing was alcohol? You said no beverages, you would not, would you permit people to bring their own alcohol? Are you saying no alcohol at the event?
We'd like to have an all-ages show, so we, no booze, you know.
Okay. And porta-potties, or are you going to use the restaurant facilities that are inside the church? Okay. Those, Mayor, those were the main concerns that I had. Our main concern was by the police department staff issue was the parking north of 55th. It's just pedestrian would be too much at risk crossing. That's our main concern. Other than that, we wish them well.
I think when I first saw this on the agenda, I was a little bit concerned. But hearing how your plans have changed and that now it's going to be in the afternoon, it's going to be a couple of hours, you're going to alert all of the residents in the area, you know, I, I think I'm okay with this.
The only thing I would suggest is pick an alternate date in case it rains. And if you can figure that date out, publish it with your-
Yeah, so that you don't have to come back.
That way you don't have to.
Any other questions? Thank you. We're coming in, it'll be on our agenda for Monday evening. Thank you. Flapjacks Incorporated, DVA Emmy's Family Dining Liquor License. Board to consider reducing the number of Class IV liquor licenses by one and subsequently increasing the number of Class IV licenses by one to accommodate a change in ownership of Emmy's Family Dining at 200 West Ogden Avenue.
Good evening. This is a pretty straightforward request. There is a change in ownership with Emmy's Restaurant. It is, the business is staying within the family. The background investigation was conducted. There's nothing in the background investigation that would, that revealed anything that would deny the applicant's, the change in ownership. If you go to Emmy's, you will notice absolutely zero change in operation, management, personnel or staff. This is merely a change within the family of owners. So with that, any questions?
Thank you. Next item, Class 16 Liquor License. Bring Your Own Bottle BYOB. Board to consider creating a new liquor license classification, permitting the practice of a customer bringing their own bottle of alcohol, BYOB, into a licensed premise. This is an item that we've been thinking about for a long time. This is an item that has been considered in the past, and it has been brought up again for consideration to help our restaurants and mainly our restaurants have more business and have an atmosphere where people can afford to go out to dinner and not have to pay so much money for their, their bottle of, their bottle of wine. Go ahead, please.
Exactly. That is my first paragraph, so that's the foundation. Staff was tasked with, with researching and drafting an ordinance for BYOB. For those that don't know what a BYOB is, is Bring Your Own Bottle. The key points and the highlights of the ordinance as drafted, currently, we are proposing to allow a patron to bring in one bottle of uncorked, previously unopened wine into an establishment for, for consumption. The consumption of the alcohol will be in conjunction with the consumption of a meal, so you need one to go with the other. The people that, inside the establishment that will control the wine that a patron might, will bring in will be alcohol servers and sellers trained. The establishment, at their discretion, can charge a corkage fee for the consumption of the alcohol. And generally, in our research, the corkage fee is equal to the cheapest bottle of wine on the menu. And the corkage fee is for the business recouping some of the loss of, obviously, not selling their own alcohol to the patrons. In order to qualify, there's, there's two categories. Businesses that, that currently have liquor license in the categories 1, 2, 3, 4, 7, and 8 can qualify. There's going to be a application process. They will be, if approved, they will be granted a new proposed classification of a Class 16 liquor license, so they will have dual licenses, you know, whether it be a 1 and a 16, a 2 and a 16, so on. For those businesses that don't have a, one of the previous classifications, they will have a standalone Class 16 classification. All the same requirements are in place. Background investigation will be conducted. Results turned over to the liquor commissioner for review at his discretion. The fee structure that we're looking at has the initial application fee, again, for Class 16 being $1,500. The initial license fee of $300, we would, we would request that that be built into the, the initial application fee of $1,500. So an initial business will put out $1,500 with that $300 rolled into that fee. Annual fees will be $300 as proposed. There is clearly reduced fee, annual fee, from other liquor classifications, and there's a lot that, a lot less work, I guess, for the, for the business to, to kind of accommodate that, that lower fee structure. Certainly, this is not set in stone. This is a, this is a large ordinance. There's a lot of, a lot of little things that, that certainly can be looked at. Some of the things that the board might consider in the future or right now, that right now, we're restricting this to wine only. At the board's discretion, it certainly could, you know, add to that. We have set a time limit between 5:00 and 10:00 PM, which we feel is generous, you know. Obviously, we're looking at a dinnertime crowd. We want to limit it. Certainly, we don't want people squatting for long periods of time, so we want to be able, we want the businesses to have an opportunity to say, hey, it's 10 o'clock, time's up, time to move on if, if that situation arises. The fee structure certainly is up for discussion. The fee structure was based on a survey of five, five or six towns that we, we looked at with these ordinances. We have talked to staff at Downers Grove who have a BYOB on the books. They have not reported any problems with, with their, their ordinance as, as it is. They're our close neighbor, so very good comparable. As far as the compliance goes, as you know, we, the police department conducts compliance checks with all the businesses that hold liquor licenses, no matter the classification. A little bit problematic because we have, you know, the, the easy way or the traditional way we, we conduct our operations where we send an underage person in to see if they sell or do not sell. A little problematic with this because now we're, we're supplying that agent with the alcohol to go in, a little bit of an entrapment issue. So we're looking more along the lines of a spot check with our patrol officers and, and of course, you know, we'll field any complaints that the public might generate as any other call. So somebody's in the restaurant, they, they call us, say, hey, we think that somebody's overserved, or, you know, whatever, we will respond to that complaint. So with that, are there any questions?
The other question that we discussed on this ordinance is when they finish their dinner, if they still have some wine left. The procedure that has been in place already permitted by the state is that the restaurant can put that in a sealed container?
Correct.
And they can, with the receipt inside, and they can take the remainder home with them?
Right. We have language in the ordinance that, that mirrors the Illinois Liquor Control Act. That language was created in order to help out the Illinois Vehicle Code for transportation of open alcohol. So I did- So I did hand a copy of that, the compiled statute out with the other material. So yes, they absolutely can do that.
And the other question that I have is, say they only, they drink two-thirds of a bottle, they don't want to take the rest of it home. What happens to the remainder of that bottle of wine?
I think with a business's discretion, I'm sure they would toss that out with, the same as they would if wine was purchased on, on site.
Okay. Any other questions?
Just, I don't know if it's a concern, a question, a point, I'm not sure. I don't see in the ordinance where it addresses the size of the bottle. A restaurant would traditionally sell, you know, the regular bottle, but if you go into a liquor store, you can buy a much larger bottle of wine. And I didn't know if we wanted to address that in the ordinance. The other thing I had, I'm not sure if it's a concern because the restaurant would be required to monitor the consumption, but one bottle of wine per patron, that would mean two people during an hour dinner could potentially consume two bottles of wine. That seems excessive to me. I, I don't know. I'm just kind of throwing that out there, I'm just thinking about these things.
The size is certainly a factor and should be addressed.
Especially since we're number, we're saying one per patron.
Because, you know, the typical response on a, pulling somebody over is they had two beers that were, you know, this big. So yeah, size matters on that, so I would, I would suggest that the board come up with a size limitation.
There's a definition section which although you won't see it in your version, in my handwritten version, I added the word uncorked so that a patron has to bring in a, an unopened bottle of wine. They can't bring open, an open bottle of wine. And then we can add that...
The size?
The size.
How do you feel about one bottle per patron? I mean, I guess on one hand, the restaurant's monitoring the consumption and making sure people aren't overserved, but it seems like a lot of wine.
Sure. From a liability standpoint, you know, whether a patron brings in the alcohol or the business serves the alcohol, it's all the same as far as liability goes. I mean, their premises is...
So it's really kind of a moot point, it doesn't really matter.
Somebody could sit down and drink four glasses of wine at dinner and roll home.
It also could be part of, it also could be part of like a wine tasting where they say, all right, you bring your red, I'm bringing my white.
Okay, oh, that's a good point. Okay. Okay. Bye-bye, that's good.
Pull it in the standard, 750 little liters, isn't that what the standard is?
Yep.
That would be your size. Nothing larger than that.
Instead of a 1.5 liter.
Right. And on the uncorked, you know, bringing a bottle uncorked, we certainly don't want, you know, somebody to dump out the bottle of wine and stick in a bottle of Everclear and call it wine.
Or make wine at home and bring it.
Right. So we, yeah, exactly. So we certainly want to make sure that what they bring is what's in the bottle, so.
Yeah. Gotcha.
Any questions?
Well, the restaurant, people would have the responsibility of uncorking it then to make sure that it was...
Correct, correct. Right. Initially, as far as the application of this, I walk into a restaurant with a bottle of wine, I present it to the server, she verifies that I'm 21 or over, she has control, she uncorks it, and whether she controls the bottle from there or leaves it on the table, it's all well and good.
You know, this sounds a little bit crazy, but also with the ability for a restaurant that already holds a liquor license to add a Class 16, I'm a little, I'm not sure about that, only because our, I'd almost want their input on it because I could see where that might put the pressure on them to allow it. And I know that in the restaurant business, much of their profit comes from their bar.
Have any of the, have any of the restaurants that already have a sales, liquor sales license asked for it?
I'm not aware of any, any business that had asked.
Yes.
Chief Mulholland may.
They have.
Yep.
Been a couple.
One of, Deputy Chief Gunter mentioned, two businesses have requests. One is an applicant and a potential business coming to town. The other is Amber Cafe. Amber has asked, has pursued this for some time since January this year. Amber is in favor of this. Ranka, the manager there and part owner, has been pushing for this, asking for this for some time. Her explanation was is that a lot of businesses are coming in, asking for this. They have people calling, asking, make a reservation, oh, by the way, do you allow BYOB? When she tells them no, those people said, cancel my reservation, I'd rather go someplace else. She feels that this is a need that would help her business.
Well, I think if, if businesses want it and, you know, their dram shop insurance is their problem, the monitoring is their problem, and we could, you know, what if it to death because with current restaurants that, and anybody that's got a liquor sales license, you can sit there and go, what if someone has a bottle in their purse? Or, you know, people are used to this, it's, it's pretty accepted all over, and if it helps our businesses and our restaurants sell food, I'm all for it.
I mean, I wouldn't have a problem with the others requesting it. I mean, it's...
It's their option, so, I mean, it's out there.
It's up to them to make that choice. I mean, they know what they sell now. If they want to give that as another option, that's, that's their choice.
Right.
Because there's so many open-ended possibilities, I'd like to go into effect and then come back in six months and take a look at it and see if there are any problems. That we need to go back and refine.
Sure. And obviously, we will keep a close eye on it from a compliance enforcement perspective.
No, it is, there's all kinds of exceptions that could come into possibility here. Let's face it.
Yep, I like it.
As, as you indicated, bringing out an extra bottle in their purse and just swapping bottles or something, so I think it's a great, it's a great idea and we'll try it and correct any problems that may arise down the road. Any other questions?
Sounds good.
Thank you. Next item, 218 North Cass, Marco Tambour Hair Salon. Board to consider the following request. A, special use permit, request operate a ground floor beauty parlor in the B1 Limited Business District. And B, development permit, request operate a women's retail salon in the B1 Limited Business District.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Marco Tambour Hair Salon. How are you?
Could you speak up a little bit, please?
Good evening. I don't know if you can hear or not. I'm Marco Tambour Hair Salon. I'm from 213 Burlington in Clarendon Hills.
Okay.
And I would like to move the salon to 218 North Cass.
Okay.
The bank building, huh?
Which building is that?
It's the old DuPage Bank where they were staying temporarily.
Okay, okay, okay.
And the...
I won't be serving no liquor in there.
Lindley Designs. It'll be BYOB. Mr. Tambour, are you planning on doing nails in your salon?
At this moment, no.
Okay. What about the next moment?
I don't have, I have two ladies, we're only going to do hair. I would like to look for somebody down the road if it's possible.
Okay, because the reason that I'm asking is that requires special ventilation.
Oh, it does? Then I don't have to. No.
So that's why I'm asking, to see if you've explored that.
Now, if down the road I wanted to, would I be possible to add it on or no?
Yeah, Shannon will work with you on that. Where are we, if this, I mean, the building as it sits now is empty, vacant, except for, of the three stores, Lindley is, has the brown paper up and is getting ready to open. But where are we with the whole fire thing? Is this something that has to be sprinkled now as it sits or...
Nope.
What's the deal?
Nope. He's good.
Okay. So we won't have a holdup because of that? Thank you, Trustee Fleming. Okay, just wanted to make sure there was not going to be a holdup with the whole sprinkler issue.
Any other questions?
Just a note, I added, a special use oftentimes runs with the property, so you can sell your business, this special use for, you know, hair salon would apply to the next business. But the ordinance is written that if the special use ceases for at least six months, it terminates automatically. So if you...
I'm sorry, say that again?
If you were to cease your operations for six months, the special use is going to terminate automatically. So if you go out of business for six months, then try and sell your salon, for someone to step into your shoes at the same location, they're going to have to come in for a new special use permit.
Perfect.
I do have a question of the other board members. Did everybody look at the email that Brad Peash sent to Shannon? I don't know what to say about it. I don't want to, it keeps somebody from doing business and I understand somebody saying you're letting somebody in right next door to me as competition, but...
Can I comment on that?
Yeah.
It is against Illinois law to use too much competition as grounds for denying a zoning request, particularly a special use request. And it's from the Illinois Supreme Court in the Living Word case. Can't use too many restaurants or too many auto dealers or too many salons as a reason for denying a request that's otherwise lawful and valid. You'd have to, in this case, show that there were, it has unique or special impact on surrounding properties or the public in order to deny it.
So as a result, if 15 salons want to open on Cass, we can't say there is a glut of them?
You can impose a moratorium on salons if you feel like there are too many and you want to analyze it. Many communities have done that with banks where they have a retail section of their town and everything was filled up with banks and they said, we've got to halt this, study it, find an appropriate area for banks to be located.
So would we be able to put a limit on it like we have for the massage therapists?
That's, well, that's pursuant to a licensing scheme that's authorized by the state. This is a little different.
But somewhat on the same...
I'd have to look into that. I'm not aware of an ability to put a cap on a, on otherwise lawful zoning use, but it may be permissible.
Yeah, because the, don't the cosmetologists all have to be licensed? The people who cut hair have to have a license to do it.
But we can't license them.
Right.
I know, but the, it's, isn't that sort of equate to the massage therapist, they're licensed by the state?
The therapists are, but the establishments are licensed by the village. So we can control the number. Anyhow, it's a good question. I guess if it becomes a problem, I'd be more than happy to look into it or if it arises in another context, or if you guys can be of direction, now I'll look into it.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't, I don't think any of us here would go to the point where there would be nothing but hair salons down the street. I mean, I think eventually one of us would go, hey, wait a minute, isn't there something we can do to kind of, you know, mix this up a little bit or say, no, we got enough of that?
Unless the state starts charging sales tax to them.
Well, that's true.
It's not in other states.
Yeah.
That's true.
Can I ask you a question? Have you got any drawings yet for what it's going to look like on the inside or an approximate cost of the buildup?
No, I haven't really. And the reason why is because I didn't know if I should sign a new contract with my other place, if I'm going to be able to get that or not. I was running with a really short time.
Make approval, subject to the approval of the plan for the...
You can, but who's going to have approval? Do you want to come back to the board?
I think we'd like to see it. We don't have any idea what it's going to look like.
Yeah, because I mean, if it's, you know, going to look like, you know, the circus marquee or something, we want to know about it.
Well, they'd have to fall within the guidelines of sign ordinance, so that in itself is going to, you know, establish what they can and can't do as far as how the inside looks.
This is an idea, just to...
I mean, I actually, I'm okay with this. I, I think the competition's good, I think it's healthy. I think if he's willing to come into such a competitive market, go for it.
Yeah, I think that's fine, but I'd like to see what it's going to look like because we, you know, we usually, even with facade grants and all that, we'd like to see what, what we're going to, what we're going to have there. So, you know, as far as coming in, it's a great idea, it's just we kind of want to see, we don't like surprises.
So what I would recommend based on this discussion, I'm sorry to cut you off, but the special use and the development permit could be approved on Monday night with the condition that any building permits or signed permits shall, the plan shall first be presented to the village board. So you've got your approval, they just want to make sure you're not doing anything out of the ordinary or untasteful in the downtown area.
That way you can move forward.
Yeah.
It'll be very tasteful too. Thank you.
Shannon?
I just wanted, I guess, to get some direction, but then John spoke up. So if the applicant was able to come up with some sort of sketch plan for Monday, would that be beneficial or were you looking for something a little bit more finalized?
I think we're looking for something a little more than that.
Okay.
It'll still be on the agenda for Monday, so you can get started.
Shannon, while you're, while you're up there, do you have any idea how many salons we have already in CBD?
At least a half a dozen.
One, two, three, four, five, six, this would be seven, I believe.
If it's six, I would be the sevens.
This would be seven.
Possibly 10 even with the ones on the south side of the tracks.
Oh, well, I don't know if the count cuts on Cass, I don't know if they do.
Yeah, they do.
Shannon, can you tell us what happened at the public hearing?
Absolutely. Last week, the Planning and Zoning Commission did hold the public hearing. We apologize for the rapid-fire succession of scheduling the meeting this evening. Normally, we try to wait so we have minutes available, but the petitioner is in a unique circumstance. Since scheduling the last meeting, his lease has actually expired in Clarendon Hills within the last few days, so he's trying to determine if this will be approved so that he can continue his business operations. And the commission, I'm sorry, the commission recommended approval and did not have any adverse commentary. Maybe, John, you have any feedback?
The letter that you referenced was brought up and the applicant testified that he's got a very strong existing client base that he would and his other stylist would bring to Westmont. And he doesn't see his salon with how he markets it, competing with the existing salons. Thinks it's a different type of styling and service altogether.
Okay.
Was that accurate portrayal of your comment?
Yes. I've been voted one of the top stylists four years in a row in Chicago Woman Magazine. I'm originally from the city, from downtown Chicago, and I moved to Clarendon Hills. And based on that, I wanted to come to Westmont. I have a lot of clients that have fly, they even fly to me, so it's not even from our own town, so that's why I didn't, not worried about the competition around here.
But you have to understand too that we want, we want it, the facade of the building to fit into our downtown area like all the other businesses, which would only be more beneficial to you as well as attracting more people to our downtown area. So we're not trying to offend you in any way, but it's just to make sure that it's the best for both of us.
Absolutely.
How do you recommend handling an applicant that wants to open right away if the ordinances get approved, but it looks like he's got to wait until another set of meetings, until plans get approved by the board before he can actually occupy the building? Is that...
Well, you know, there's going to be, there's got to be the installation of the sinks and the, you know, there's a lot of interior work to be done, I would assume.
The sink and the shampoo area is going to be all the way in the back, so it's not going to be exposed to the front.
No, what I'm saying is that the village attorney brought up whether this will delay things, but you have, based on what I saw when I went by 218 last, you have some work to do, correct?
Inside the building.
Inside the building.
Yes, I want to take the floor out and there is a building, a wall, I just want to build in to close that, you know, to divide it.
Right.
And in the center, it's really going to be just open. I have stations that within an S shape, and they're going to be set in the middle of the salon.
And with the amount of work that you have to do, coming back in front of the board at the next set of the meetings, showing us what the facade will look like, will not delay the, all the work you have to do inside the building. It's not going to hold anything up.
It's my timing at the other place.
What's your target open date? Let's put it that way. When do you want to be opened by?
I would love to be open, actually. I was hoping it was be in June when I first applied for it because my lease is up in June. And, and I didn't know what to do between signing a new lease or not because I don't know if I was...
How long will this interior work take you?
Pardon me?
How long will the interior work take you?
I was hoping two weeks.
Two weeks?
Right, then it's somewhere like two weeks. Somewhere like two weeks max.
Does he need any special permits or anything, Shannon?
He would need a sign permit and we would also work with him. We have the downtown design guidelines, so we would provide those to him to request that he work within the fabric of what's expected downtown. So the sign permit and also to piggyback on what Trustee Emory said earlier, if he did change the scope of the work and need to add nail salon components, he would need to get permits through the economic development department as well.
It'll probably take more than a couple of weeks just to get a sign.
Did you want the exterior review or just exterior?
Exterior. I don't care about the interior.
I would think, I would think that it's going to take more than a couple of weeks just to do the amount of work that you're talking about in there.
For me, there's really not much of work besides just the plumbing that we're going to put, I mean, building that wall to divide the place and just make a, make a shampoo area for the sinks.
As you're talking about replacing the floor, what about actual stations themselves?
They're removable stations. They are removable. So, they can work with them as, you know, because they're back-to-back, they're not really.
The fixture changes would require a plumbing permit, so you'd have to turn in that material, and that could take about a work week to get issued. So, there's at least a seven-day window before probably the work on the unit would get started. And what is the next board meeting? July 1st, I think?
Wouldn't you, you'd have some upgraded electrical in there you'd have to put in, wouldn't you?
I don't think it would require anything more than what it has, because it's just like, as long as they have an outlet.
Okay, so you're not going to put anything in that partition wall that you're going to put up? You're not going to put any outlet or anything in there?
No, because the station are, are not set up, so I can use whatever existing outlet in there.
And what is the name of the salon?
Marco Tambor.
So, that's what it'll be called. I'd just like to see the facade of the building, because Shannon will be working with them on the inside, and how he chooses to do that is individual preference.
So, in that case, he could open, but just not put up a sign, lighting, anything on the exterior until?
I don't think we need to hold up his opening.
No, absolutely not.
Right.
And staff can work with him to get some temporary signage up in the meantime while we're waiting to resolve the other issue.
Yeah. Yeah, and then.
That's good.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Any further questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
For coming in. Thank you, Shannon. Traffic restrictions, Westview Hills Middle School. Board of Concert and Ordinance establishing traffic restrictions at Westview Hills Middle School.
Mayor, Marker School District has approached the village and identified the fact that they intend to change some of their busing procedures that'll be effective in the next school year in August. And the procedures are, are both, they're modifying their, their walking radius as well as the fee structure that is associated with busing. These factors added together lead this district to believe, as well as staff, that there's going to be a dramatic increase in vehicular traffic at the school, as people may be migrating from the busing to car traffic, at least initially, until that all gets steady-state and straightened out. The school district has got works. This is just a, you know, kind of a, an overview of the region. Right now, the operations are the, the cars come in, or actually, all the buses line up in front of the building and load here, and the cars queue up in this area back in the driveway. The queue right now comes down into 65th Street and is that long, and there's a little bit of periodic conflict with left turners trying to get in the, you know, the long line of cars. Once the pickup starts, it goes very fast. The afternoon is certainly more busy than the drop-off. Drop-off is very fast. You drop off and you move, but pickup, there's a long line waiting for, you know, the bell to ring. The other problem is that when, what they weren't taking into account is when you have all the buses loaded in front of the building, by law, they're technically, they need to flash while they're loading, and therefore, none of the cars can pass the buses while they're doing the loading. So, these two factors combined, you know, are really going to aggravate the, the amount of traffic that is showing up at the school. So, knowing this, the district, in a very good way, has been working towards their own plans. They're, they're making an investment on the grounds, and they already have, this is a draft copy of their first submittal for their permit application, and they want to add pavement improvements that will let the car traffic come in, circulate back out without interfering with the bus operations. They investigated other solutions, too, taking the buses around the backside of the school and trying to negotiate that, and those didn't really work out very well. So, they've got a very good plan in place, and from our point of view, is what bleeds over onto the public right away, it's in our best interest to, you know, control what happens at, at these two intersections. So, the request before you tonight is the recommendation to staff with support from the school district is to not allow any left turns onto the property and maintain the, the queue of car traffic, single file out onto 65th Street, all the way back to Ridge, if necessary, if it gets that long, so that they're all single file on the same state of the street and very orderly. It's a, let's say, a lesson learned at Marker School. It operates the same way. They all have to approach from the same direction. So, they've already sent some preliminary information home with, with parents, forewarning them of the new plan for next year. And on our end, because it involves turn restrictions in the public right away before you are the, the no-left-turn restrictions during the two peak periods, the morning drop-off and the afternoon pickup, 7:00 AM to 8:00 AM and 2:00 PM to 3:00 PM, as well as no parking, standing, stopping on the south side of the street during those same hours, because also a lesson learned at Marker, there are people that will just sit in their car across the street and try and recruit their student, you know, to walk to the vehicle across the street. So, this will vastly help traffic management during those two peak hours.
If you have a car there waiting to pick up their child, the child doesn't come out for whatever reasons, can the cars behind go around and not have to wait for that car to pull out?
They can, and they do. The, this is the plan, I, I don't know if this has been revised, but essentially, this is the plan that they're working with, and they're going to, even now today, there's a, there's a point up here with a barricade, and all the cars line up along this sidewalk down here, and they load all in this area. And as that child gets loaded, they're able to pull out, you know, to the left, out of the way of other loading vehicles. And now, they have to come all the way out here. What they're doing is adding these pavement improvements and bringing them back out to the road, separating car traffic from bus traffic.
So, their road coming back out is just like one, one lane?
Right, it's just the driveway exit, and I, I would have had them bring it back in and tie it into the same driveway, but there's power pool conflicts there, and they're, they have to be done by, you know, August for, you know, school to start, too. So, they're, they're moving very quickly in a, in a good way.
Okay. Questions, board members?
I like what they're doing, but just to understand, Steve, if you live on the west side of CAS, they still go to school here, right?
Yes.
Right? So, those people wouldn't, like, normally, if they were going to drop off their child, they'd go to CAS, they would turn on, turn off of CAS onto the street, and then they'd have to turn left. So, now, they'd have to go all the way around? Is that the way I understand it? Because there's no left turn? If you're coming off of CAS.
That is correct.
They, they can't turn left, so that means they, to get to the school, they'd have to actually, like, go around the block.
The point is, is not to come from CAS down 65th Street. If you're coming from CAS.
You're not going to be able to.
Use 67th or use 63rd and go around.
Okay.
So, here's the school here, and you got the business corridor in here. These signalized intersection here at 65th Street, and you have the apartment and the condos in here that do, these are actually walkers to the school, so they'll come in here. So, any other traffic is coming from far enough away, from the other side of 67th Street, or the other side of 63rd Street. So, there, there is no conflict with coming back over the Ridge Road and approaching from these two directions, you know, and come in here.
Broken?
You have to look at that one way over there now.
Ours is broke, yours is broken.
We don't get one.
Now one's broken.
Okay.
It's fixed.
So, that's what, you know, works well with this plan. And then, but see, we really won't know till they get into it, but.
What you're saying is, if they're coming off of 63rd, it's really all right-hand turns.
Exactly.
Which is safer.
Yes.
Coming off the other one, 67th, I mean, again, it's a left-hand turn, but it really isn't, and you know, it's a subdivision area, so it shouldn't be bad.
And when they start loading, it moves very fast. We're just, we won't know till they, we don't know what the new impact is going to be, but, you know, right now, the line comes down into here, so, you know, hopefully, it won't go past that intersection, and if it does, we'll, police department will be watching that, you know, when school opens and, you know, adjust accordingly.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Next item, calendar newsletter. Board to hear a presentation regarding the village calendar newsletter, village calendar and newsletter, and consider options to change each in order to reduce cost. Larry?
Thank you. I believe in your packets, you've received information outlining some potential options for the calendar and the newsletter. During the budgeting process, we discussed several options about ways to try to trim costs with both the calendar and the newsletter. And if you have that document in front of you, I'll go ahead and start with the calendar. Currently, the calendar costs approximately $25,000 to produce, and the majority of that price is in the printing. It's averaged around $15,000 for several years. Last year, we were actually able to reduce that cost a little bit, but on average, it's been around $15,000 for several years. So, at our meeting, we discussed the option of possibly reducing the number of total calendars we print, possibly by half approximately, and then also reduce the cost completely of delivery with the notion that we would simply put the calendars in our municipal buildings and public agency facilities, and then just alert the public to come and pick those up. And so, hopefully, the goal would be people who are most interested in the calendar would, would come and pick it up, and you are not expending the cost to deliver to every single home when, in all likelihood, there's probably a decent amount of people who receive it at home and have no use for it whatsoever, don't pay attention to it. Other people were well aware that they use it significantly throughout the year. With that, I put together some pricing. Delivery, of course, goes down to zero if we're not using the postal service. Production, if we stay with a 60-page total calendar, that includes the cover, that would be approximately $8,000. I spoke with Manager Searle about that, and he wanted to make sure that, that number could be hard and fast, so we could easily say that that's a not-to-exceed amount. And then, if we go down to the next step and talk about printing, I went ahead and solicited two different types of bids for total number of pages, 60 pages, which is the amount of pages our current calendar is, and then, once again, that includes the cover. But I also solicited bids for 48 total pages. And so, you see bids from four different companies there. The first company is the company that we've used for many years and is a very trusted printer in terms of they know what to expect from this particular project. We have never had any, or very few instances in which bid prices were different than what we actually paid. Rainbow Press, the second company there, we've used them for our newsletter in the past, and I would also consider them to be a trusted company, so I feel confident with both of those two bids. The third company, as you can see, their bid is significantly higher. I included them in the bid. Westmont Special Events uses them for different things, but as you can see, their pricing is 33% higher than the first two. And the last company has a lower bid there, however, that does not reflect any pre-press time. I would estimate there would be a minimum of 20 hours pre-press time, which would quickly inflate that cost by about $3,000. And also, it should be mentioned that, that particular company, we, the broker that we're working with in that particular company, we had worked with them previously, selected them as the low bidder, and then, at the last minute, we had to cancel that bid because the company went out of business. And at the last minute, we had to scramble for a different printer. So, the first two bids, I guess I would just say, I feel very comfortable with either of those companies, and the third one, of course, is significantly higher. The fourth one, if, if we were to choose that company, I would want to go back to them and really make sure that they're bidding this accurately. So, those are some of the different options and ideas for the calendar. Do you want me to go right into the newsletter? Talk about that?
Okay. You want to talk about the calendar first?
Yeah.
Let's just talk, see where we're going with that. What I thought was interesting is, it's, between those two, 48 pages from one is 60, you know, almost 7,000, and 48 for the other one is, you know, 6,800, but then, when you go up, 60 pages, you know, lithograph is actually cheaper than the rainbow. So, you know, how.
Yeah. That's a good point.
Yeah, so if you go with 48, one, the rainbow is less expensive by, you know, almost, just like $200, but if you go to 60 pages, the lithograph, if I understand it correctly, if I'm reading this correctly.
Yeah.
Lithograph ends up being less expensive by a couple hundred dollars, which I just thought was interesting.
And often, it's interesting when you deal with printers, because if the printer has their own print machine on their premises, every print machine is different. And so, a particular company will be very well-versed at being able to produce a certain document with a certain type of paper, and then, the next document costs more, and it's, it's very interesting. So, I always, it's always valuable to go out and get mini bids from printers when you're, you know, looking at different projects. The other thing to mention is litho is also a Westmont business. However, Rainbow is a Chamber member.
Just over a dollar a piece for 6,000, even if it's 60 pages long, is a pretty good price.
They're both are, yeah.
That is very reasonable. I mean, considering the quality. It's phenomenal quality.
Yeah. And both of these would basically say not to exceed 60 pages, not to exceed 6,000 copies. So, that would be the most we'd pay. I mean, it might go down, but it doesn't seem like if it's less, it, it doesn't go down a whole lot, but it does go down a little bit.
The other thing to consider is, if you do reduce the total number of pages, then you get to decide which pages do you cut. Some of the ordinances and, it's listed as important information, those, those are probably pretty, pretty easily cut, but we've actually been trimming those over the years. They're down to about four, four to six pages anyway. After that.
Excuse me, those are works of art.
What's that? Excuse me.
Well, I guess we're all getting the ordinances.
Ooh.
You have to add those.
Yeah, we need to boost it up maybe. But after that, you might be looking, for instance, at the Chamber Directory. I know some people have suggested that, but a lot of people use that as a, as a welcome resource, and, and I know the Chamber, actually, when they sell their memberships, they use that as a selling point, that their members are included in the village calendar, so there's.
I think the difference between 60 and 48 is negligible, as long as we don't get 13,000 of them in there. You know, we're using them for kindling.
Sure. I agree.
I like the 6,060 pages. That's got all the information for the people that want it, those 6,000 people.
And again, if they can't get there to get them, get their name, address, and phone number. Call me, and I'll deliver it.
Right.
Special delivery.
We'll help you.
I mean, even the squad cars are out and about. They'd probably be happy to drop one off here and there.
And we probably have about 25 people a year around calendar time that ask us to drop it off or mail it to them, and we do, even, even though we send it out to everybody. So, of course.
Now, do we have to then vote on which one we're using, or is that left up to staff? I mean, in the past, I think it's been left up to staff to decide.
And since we, you know, have given our opinions, which we'd hate for budget purposes to be ignored.
These prices aren't good at the end of the year. These were for the purpose of analysis, correct?
It's, of course. And so, like, so the pencils can be sharpened on these a little bit, but I will say that lithographic in particular, they've always held true to their, their bids, so we've never had any trouble. So, so these numbers, I'm sure, will be good six months from now when we're actually producing and printing the calendar.
And what do we budget for? What do we have in the budget now?
For which aspect?
For the calendar.
Total?
Uh-huh.
22,000.
Okay.
Okay.
You'd be saving 7,000 at least.
So we just found more money.
Printing.
Love it.
Sue has spent it already.
I'd like to see if we can keep it in Westmont if possible.
I definitely feel we should keep it in Westmont.
You got the suggestion there, with the board would like to keep it in Westmont.
Keep it in Westmont, keep it at 6,000, keep it 60 pages so that we don't cut any ordinances that have been...
Works of art.
I would hate to see the graphics.
Works of art.
Yeah, that would just not be good.
All right.
Okay.
On to the village newsletter, then.
Work of art is the front cover.
Yeah. John give that, too?
You do, you do that, you do that yourself?
I do, yes.
Yeah, that's always different.
It is, it's like, all the covers have been nice, but that's the best one so far with all those pictures. Okay.
Okay. Newsletter.
On to the village newsletter. Once again, as we were discussing ways to decrease expenses, or at least look at different options, the suggestion came that maybe we could start using an eight-and-a-half-by-eleven sheet and print it double-sided as a newsletter, and then send it out via our water bills. And that can, it can be sent out as a printed piece with the water bills that are sent out printed, and then for anybody who has, receives their water bill electronically, we'll create a PDF of the same document, and they will find that link and be able to access it that way. So theoretically, we're hitting most of the people in the community, you'd probably be missing a lot of multi-unit people. But with that, we would be getting the information out significantly more times a year. Currently, we're only doing two newsletters a year, and you're paying for post office delivery. You'd no longer be paying the post office, but you'd be paying the water billing company. And the whole project total per year is between 7,500 and 8,000 dollars, so it's basically a very similar price, except you're getting your message out six times a year instead of twice a year. And that's, that's pretty much the nuts and bolts on that.
Putting it in with the water bill doesn't change the postage, right? Because don't we pay some kind of bulk rate?
We pay...
Added weight wouldn't...
I don't think we, we don't handle the postage. We get paid per sheet. We pay per sheet that they put into the water bill, so we do get...
Oh, okay, so we don't care about that?
It's 3,500 dollars a year.
Okay, so that covers everything.
Yeah, so the price that I gave, 7,500 to 8,000, that's everything.
Okay.
That gets it out six times a year.
And what do we have budgeted now for the newsletter?
It's approximately the same.
About the same?
Yeah, it would be, there's virtually no change between the two, it's just that you get the message out six times.
Printing is 8,000 dollars alone.
I could be wrong on that then, I apologize.
So, well, no, that's, oh, I see.
We should be saving some if we're not mailing it.
So it's 8,000.
And it's going out in the newsletter, I mean, it's going out with the water bill, aren't we saving there?
We're saving on postage.
Should be.
Should be, on postage, other than they had, it sounds like it'd be...
We pay the per-sheet folding fee to put, yeah, which...
It's gonna be two, two sheets, both sides?
No, it's one sheet.
One sheet.
One sheet, two sides.
Okay.
And so with that, I mentioned it in my write-up, that does become a challenge if you're, you know, let's say you have 15 articles or features that you're trying to put into two sheets, you need to figure out a way to efficiently write that information. If I had to guess, it'll probably evolve over several months, and at some point, it'll be very link-heavy in terms of referring people to the website for expanded versions of the same article.
Which would be good.
Total budget amount for the newsletter was 13,500.
Wow.
That was production, delivery, and printing.
What was that?
13,000, right? They'd budgeted.
So we'd be saving 5,000 a year. I apologize, I was...
So we'd be saving 5,000 there and 9,000 on the calendar. That works for me.
But didn't you say, Larry, it would be going out more often?
Yes.
So you wouldn't have to put as much on. I mean, you think, we've only sent two newsletters out right now, and so it seems, you know, to find, you're packing a lot in there.
Right.
Going out four more times...
Just spreads it out.
Just spreads it out, so you should be, hopefully, then, you know, a front and back should be sufficient. But you're right, if it does get cumbersome, then you have to, you know, you're right, go to the website and read more, but...
Sure.
I like that idea.
Hopefully, spread it out.
Oh, we'll make it work.
Hey, any more questions?
No.
Thanks for the research.
Thank you for putting this together. And saving us money.
Saving the village more money. Thanks, Eric. Hey, miscellaneous, finance ordinance number four.
Waive the reading?
Request to waive the reading. Purchase orders. Questions on purchase orders, first section and the second section? Questions? Going once, going twice, moving right along. Executive session. Manager has requested an executive session regarding personnel. And with that being said, unless there's something else for the board to discuss, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session regarding personnel.